Kentucky League of Cities is putting on homelessness and housing. And I think it's predicted to be really good, really popular, housing and health resource for all types of housing issues. It's tomorrow morning, starts at nine AM until four thirty. I don't know that I'm gonna be able to make, cause I have another Zoom call at ten. Uh, from a board, a state board that I serve on, so it's gonna be hard to Zoom two screens, I think. But that is available, you can register online, if any council members have interest. Also, on November the second, twenty seventh, which is Monday before Thanksgiving. I have scheduled, I've been working on for a while, I mentioned it to you all before. A local meeting concerning housing and homelessness. That's gonna hopefully bring together all agencies in county that pertain to mental illness, uh, housing, law enforcement, homelessness, addiction, and all that under one roof for us as a county to meet and talk about issues that we have going on. I've been working on this for a good while, but hopefully all the invitations should go out tomorrow by five o'clock tomorrow evening with the agenda of the meeting, and that starts at one o'clock to about three forty-five on Monday, November twenty-seventh, at the Lawrence County Community Center up by the high school. She has a room reserved for us that will be, I think, just about the appropriate size for the amount of people, not way too big to talk in and not crowded.
Did you hear, Bud, was that after Thanksgiving, the Monday after Thanksgiving?
No, it's the Monday, it's the twenty-seventh. It is, I'm sorry. I said it wrong. Uh, one after lunch, one to three forty-five is our goal there. I got an invitation and a text from Senator Phillip Wheeler inviting, and he asked me to share it with you. Hang on one second. It is, told him I would, it is. Uh, been selected to host Republican Senate Majority Caucus Retreat in the thirty-first Senate District this year. I want to invite you and members of Louisiana City Government to the official opening reception on the twenty-ninth of November at six to nine PM at U-Poc in Pikeville. All thirty-one members of Republican Senate Majority, including Budget Staff, will be there, and I would be honored if any of you folks could attend. I promised Tim I passed that on to you. That's November the twenty-ninth. That Thanksgiving been the last week, it's had meats around different stuff. And because when he sent me that, I was like, you mean they're gonna do that the night before Thanksgiving? It's Wednesday after. Okay. So those are some of the announcements that I had. As you know, we were able to purchase a street sweeper. We have an old one. And I'm being told that just the moldering, it made me worth a chunk of change at least. And it's just a nice ore, in our way. I don't need it on the lot any longer. We do have some other surplus equipment I would like to sell also, but after going out there yesterday and looking at it, a lot of it is like stuff that I really think would bring a lot more money in the spring. Like, most people don't wanna buy a mower right now, or a sealing machine right now. So I think we'd be better off just to hold off on that, two, three more months, maybe February, March, put it up, get more money out of it then. But if you all would approve me to sell that old street sweeper that's non-operational except for the engine, we will list it on GovDeals and auction it off.
Public surplus.
Public surplus.
I can make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Chutsey, second by Mr. Rowe, all in favor, signature of C. Nine. Any opposed? Okay, and I don't know when it came, but I didn't get it till today. But Bev brought us a request that we got into your packets at the last minute this evening from the Lawrence County Maintenance Society. You wanna speak to us here? And I think they're able to use that and...
Correction, y'all got a thousand?
Thousand, okay. This said five hundred. This letter I got says five hundred.
My apologies, that, that's, oh, my apologies. Y'all gave a thousand.
I think you all asked for five hundred and they gave you a thousand.
That's correct, that is correct. But yeah, you actually gave a thousand.
The letters, and I think they're able to use that money to ma- get matching funds.
Matching funds, yes.
From somewhere else, and then she had on here the statistics of basically what she was able to do with it. If anybody has any questions for her, or she wants to explain it anymore.
If you need a corrected letter with that, with the correct amount, do that.
I think that's fine. I circled it. Says as a result of your donation, a matching grant was provided to Lawrence County Maintenance Society to assist us in continuing the trap neuter return program. It says forty-nine surgeries.
Correct. We, well, the matching funds that came from Tubod, we actually combined those funds with a grant we got from another organization who only pays partial of the surgery. So by combining the two, we got the more benefit above. That's why there's so many more surgeries under T and R than there was for personal pets, because we were able to combine somebody else and get more surgeries done.
Now, once you do this, do you let them back out of the community, or do they go to the shelter?
No. These are free roaming kitties that usually are not super socialized, so they're not adoptable. The purpose of the trap neuter return is trap them, fix them, put them back in the community where they're used to be, where they're used to living. And in most cases where we're trapping, somebody has been, you know, feeding them, kinda taking care of them. Yeah. That, that's the most humane thing to do. I mean, you know, the only other option is euthanizing. You don't wanna do that. If, if there were enough farms in Lawrence County, people would volunteer to take barn cats, and we could relocate some to farms and barns, but we just don't have people who step up to the plate and say, "Yeah, I'll take some barn cats." But by getting it fixed, we're helping to live in the bud so many unwanted litters and to stop, you know, the explosion of populations and...
So you're asking for us to commit this thousand again for the upcoming year?
If you can, any amounts would be appreciated.
How far did that go? Did it take you through the year, or did y'all run out of funds?
We were able to use your thousand dollars to do personal pets. Okay, people who can't afford to get their own personal pets done. And then when we got the matching funds, uh, we started T and R, and that lasted from May the second through September the twenty-sixth. But that's when we spent all of that money. Let me make one correction. I have been trapping in a couple of locations where I discovered that some cats were friendly, and we did, I did, adopt them out to homes. Couple of instances, just to let you know, when we trap like this, it gives us a chance to look at the health and welfare of the colony. And there were two, these cats that were extremely required eye surgery. The T and R money was not used for their eye surgery. I raised money on the side to pay for their eye surgeries, and they're living very happily. One recently was adopted. That, that kitten would not have lived if it had stayed out in the home for a while. It would not. It was so sick.
Remember, what's your budget a year out there? Do you know?
I'm not, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Humane Society and the shelter.
Okay.
The spade, neuter, and T and R programs are just subprograms for that. So I cannot speak for operationally of what's going on, you know, out there. This is not part of their, their budget. This is, I work grants, and I bust my hump to find private donors and organizations that will give us grant money, kinda on the side, it's extra, to do this spade, neuter, and T and R.
Some of this, assuming some of the trapping is going on here in the city?
Yes. I've had two locations. Big, big, big locations that we've done a lot of trapping. There's incidentals all over, but the colony up by the old Clevinger Gas Station. They, up there, because a lot of people who are in the apartments have a tendency to move and leave and toss their cats outside, and then they start reproducing, okay? One of the women that works in the Clevinger office across the street, she feeds them, takes care of them, okay? The other location is Lackey Avenue. I've all heard about, you know, the problems with stray cats over Lackey Avenue. Been focusing on that area, getting those cats fixed.
So majority of it stays here in the city?
Yeah, these funds?
Yes.
The majority of the T and R, yes. Uh, the personal pets? I haven't done a tracking of where those, those could be anywhere in the county, to be honest with you. They just have to be residents of Lawrence County to be, to qualify to get assistance to get their personal pets. To get assistance to get that done. Some, some people help by paying a partial copay to help offset some of the costs, and others don't pay anything.
Does the county give you any money?
They did last year.
I think they did like we did.
They did. At the same time, yeah, they gave first. And then I came to you all to see.
Any more questions?
Where's the thousand?
Yeah, second. Mr. McClain, any more questions? All in favor, signature of C. Nine?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, for the sake of, uh, the executive session might run a little bit longer than usual this time. Do we have any audience con- uh, Kathy pushed him around this time. Have any public comments that you all wanna make before we go into executive session? If some of these folks don't wanna stay? It might be that long, but especially, Bud, we got a ballgame tonight.
Yeah, well, that would...
A UK game tonight, so it won't be that long. Yeah, I'm gonna make it, say that. Any comments from the council before we go into executive session?
Uh, I think, it had been brought to my attention by a couple of different people in town about leash law with dogs being on leash, leashes. Do we have a law like that?
We do.
Okay. Apparently, we had a, a couple of dogs attack some cats, and, uh, they were not on leashes, and there's been some other people complaining about dogs running. There's especially two that run around town a lot without leashes. I'm not sure how we take care of that, but if we do have a law, it needs to be enforced because they're not the most friendliest dogs around, and before they attack a child, they're attacking animals.
All of our dog complaints go through the county's Animal Control laws, or we're not equipped or trained to catch dogs, so.
So do we contact those people, or?
And we always have, and they usually, you're trying to trap them or, or sign them. If they need assistance with signing, we'll help sign them.
Can someone look into that then?
You know who's at the end, the torns?
No, they're usually running around all by themselves.
Yeah, we, we just caught three.
We just took it through.
Oh, did you just get some recently?
Yeah, we had an incident of a couple of cats.
Yeah.
I, I know at least two. There might be more than that. And there was, there was one lady who was, you saw with the dogs all the time. When, when she got asked about it, she said, "Really, only one was hers." Only one, so she's, she's asked the homes, but only one, send the homes, so it's only one was hers. The others just was tagged along with her, was walking. So all that wasn't hers went to the pound and is up for, hopefully, somebody to take.
Also, do we have a law about if your dog uses the bathroom in the yards, you're supposed to pick up? Is that on the book?
No, I don't think so.
Is there a reason we don't have one?
Did the council ever make one?
Probably not to address that.
Well, I'd contact the people that are doing it.
I mean, I, yeah. Remember here, I mean, I've heard a lot of people, you know, complain. If we did have a law, I mean, it's in all cities. I know Lexington, every place, you have...
How you gonna enforce that?
They've been pretty successful in Lexington's enforcement.
Well, it's gonna have a lot, they've been partnering with them.
And I talked to the gentleman about it. His response to me, it was funny, I was like, "That dog needs to be on the leash," was he's like, "You catch it and I'll put it on leash." I said, "I ain't touched it in three years." It don't ever get over ten feet from you, but it don't get within three foot from me. I tried to catch it, he couldn't.
It crosses Madison a lot.
You could catch it.
Just before a painting.
He could catch it.
No, he ain't.
That's the only other one.
The one guy in the wheelchair. Yeah. That's the only other one now, after those three, that I know that run loose religiously.
Yep.
And I said, I talked to him, he said, "I can't catch it." And I tried, I couldn't catch it. He said, "I ain't touched it."
The other one sits in his lap.
The other one's on leash, most of them, or he's got his lap. But that one, it just stays up, or near the door from you, don't ever go far, but don't ever go close.
He's, he's sounding a drip, like I've, I've never seen a dog, you know, like ride in that car.
No, right. He, he just follows him around, protects him, but he don't... I've never seen it be aggressive, but don't be any kind, but I haven't seen it at this point. Others started running together, and that's not good when they're, straight dogs run together.
I had high concern. I did not witness it.
Bud, you wanna go?
Okay, while we were in executive session, the council voted to approve the purchase of the hospital property pursuant to a auction for the sum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I will draw a deed up and send it on to get it signed. There was also a discussion executive session about leasing some unused city property, but we're still negotiating on that. There was also some discussion about the status of the nine-one-one, but no final decision was made on that.
Potential litigation. Any, anything else?
Are you asking comments? Okay, streetlight, I'm calling it a streetlight optimization.
Oh, yeah, title based.
And I've been asked, and it's a shame this happened, the state put all the bridge and everything going to the hospital, the new road, and not one street light. And, you know, I'm getting called, or talked about from the people in the hospital and stuff, how dark that whole area is, from the bridge all the way. Is there anything the city can do about this?
Uh, I think you're talking about three different nations, right?
Bridge. With the bridge lights.
Streetlights in front of the hospital.
In front of the hospital, or from the bridge to the hospital?
Yeah, from the bridge to the hospital.
And then streetlights in Middlebrook on one street, they're colored.
My gosh.
Uh, the limelight.
Uh, that's about mine.
Yours.
Yeah, even my lights out there.
All right, so we'll start with, that's three different, we'll start with one violent lane. Streetlights in violent lane, those are black lights, like even ones downtown. We pay a monthly fee on those, absent the consultant mayor. They're not beated, so we pay sixty-nine a month, and they're supposed to maintain those for that fee. All of a sudden, in, in Middlebrook and that street, we've had boom, boom, boom. And we've been reporting this about, this about, this, it's like Donald thing. Well, recently, uh, I've been working with the power company on, on what's taken so long to get a pick. Cause normally when I report one, I'm three days, maybe it's thick across town. So what they're telling me is that, uh, that was buried underground over there, and it's not in conduit, it was direct buried cable. And it's under, it's been under streets, sidewalks, yards, everything else. And so there's a problem with the wire underground, that's affecting multiple lights. And so they're gonna have to go dig to replace it. Expensive and, uh, what would you say, invasive, I guess, to dig all that up. And as, as you, as I learned over there on the sidewalk, you know, if you've got underground fiber that foothills is running through there, you've got AT&T underground, it's like a bowl of spaghetti underground. So they're dreading it, plus saying the cost to repair that street underground is gonna be enormous. So, and I was like, I can't help, we've played on these lights for thirty years, that played directly. And so she, I have an email, uh, that says they're contemplating switching those to solar, to keep from digging all that up, and would we be agreeable to that? First, I can't believe the power company wants something to be solar. The second thing, I thought, you know, to get people's lives back, when we was trying to get them to have...
Can we all get solar?
I was like, yeah, I, I mean, I can't, I'm thinking, yeah, I think we're doing excellent to get, uh, they're bright, you know, they're LED, they're, you're, you're not digging up the street, the sidewalk, the yards. Switching to solar is a half-day job, get another one, get done. Like, I don't see why not, yes, send me the information. So I just yesterday got the email with the picture of the wire, all that. Now, she's still saying, "I don't have it approved by the way high ups, but this is what we're wanting to pitch to you and to them, and see if we can make this still work." I didn't see the reason to not make it work and get people's lives back quick as possible.
Sounds good.
Okay, in the meantime, I've been, uh, Grant and others, Grant, Florida, who had talked to me multiple times about trying to put those black streetlights in front of the hospital and middle school there. And they would like, they would like to sponsor putting banners on them and, you know, people would tie that in the city. I'm all for it myself. Well, so I had the engineers and the people look at that, they're like, "Well, you know, just for nine streetlights, it's gonna cost this much to run all this underground, everything." So I had just kinda put on hold. All right, so when she told me about the solar lights, I called her back, I said, "Well, no, I don't believe you put those solar lights on." Right, man? You just put those solar lights on the top, you don't wanna take that back, pay the whole lot, no. Only solar lights we'll agree to is on violent.
Because they don't wanna replace those underground lines.
But, so if you want more solar, no.
They should give us credit for all the years or months or whatever that they've been out.
Well, that was the road over there that was before, that was years ago, if you remember, that was out all, that, and they kept saying the same thing. They kept telling us and putting us off and putting us off, and that was back twelve years ago or longer. AEP was the one that owned the city.
Yeah. They've been, been some, uh, William drives and turns in the list, but I could go through that list and say, "Yeah, it was on there three," you know, I don't know.
Would it not be cheaper for them to cut it at the base and install it? Just ditch new conduit, new wire, and hook onto the pole?
Through Middlebrook.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, you still are digging up, and you're invasive, but you're not worried about repairing what's underground, replacing bare wire.
I think that's what they'll have to do, if, yes. I think, I don't think they're gonna fix that. Okay. It's direct buried.
Yeah.
There's too many problems with it.
Those lights were...
I think what they're talking about doing is what you see.
Okay.
But that's even expensive.
Yeah.
And solar lights, maybe.
Yeah, but they're losing revenue, right? I mean, they're be losing the, so it's...
Well, there's charges.
They're still charged with the solar lights.
Yes. But they would have to replace the solar lights when it went bad, or batteries.
All those lights were not installed at the same time.
No. And it would get done quicker.
It was kinda like, as it built up, Middlebrook built up, and people would want lights. I think at first, the people were paying for them to be installed, and then the city was taking over the... But that meant that they were put in in sections and not all at one time, like one continuous wiring or whatever.
Violent lane, one of the old streets out there, it is actually on a different electrical service.
Sorry, I mean, the van.
The rest of Middlebrook, that power is out, we without, because it comes from porcelain.
Yeah.
And yours too.
So what's your thoughts? So, so it's, it's three separate issues. The violent lane, the lights been out, new lights in front of hospitals, completely separate issue, and then the bridge, I guess. Which, what do y'all think about? I mean, do you want to...
Could be the bomb part?
Yes, on solar or no?
So we're gonna be paying the same cost to Kentucky Power for solar as we would for actual electrical lights?
Yes.
That's dumb.
I, I say they just need to run new wire.
But, yeah, but they, you know, if the solar batteries go bad, or the top goes out, or something, they still maintain it on a consistent basis.
But they install...
And they are kind of...
But installing the new will take a long time. That's, that's the downfall, right?
Yeah, the solar would work right away. While they call, uh, engineer crew and all this, and it'll be a while. And so I was thinking, especially before Halloween there, I was thinking...
Do all the lights match the same current?
Yeah, I mean, they're all the same kind of black light.
Right.
Yeah.
Those LEDs are gonna look bad with all the rest.
They are gradually switching all the streetlights, I'm not talking the bike, the black lights, the overhead streetlights are hanging up, there's gradually switching all those. Now, one thing about it, two years ago, when the franchise agreement with AEP ran out, Bud, I fought for a year, we actually got into new agreement, they reimbursed us fifty percent of the streetlight bill. So we gotta pay the bill all year, and in August, however much we paid, they sent us half of it. So if we pay sixty thousand, then August, that's the next part of it. And before that agreement last year, they was not doing that on any of the ball.
I'm not sure it's really went up any though. We need to check that.
It happened.
Yeah, it did.
It ain't go thirty thousand, probably.
Twenty-something.
We got about ten thousand dollars from them, didn't we?
Anyway, it comes over August, they're supposed to reimburse us half of it.
What is people's number for?
Lights.
They just want lights.
Actually, the thing I thought was just David, you know?
I mean, this is first I've heard of the solar. So, you know, those solar lights you get at Walmart for a dollar, they don't last long.
They're horrible.
I'm only kidding, but, uh, I mean, it depends on how quality it is, and it'll probably be just as good. I'm not, I mean, I got a nice driveway, I hate to see it all cut up just so they can put a wire from there too. And why did they lay that kind of wire without any, uh, you know?
To begin with.
Well. And what is her name, sir?
Deborah.
Deborah.
Deborah. Okay.
And then on the state road that is not in the city, uh, at this point, however... Uh, at this point, however, since I'm a five co and on the regional transportation committee, uh, we have submitted it as a project for the state, a state transportation project. That takes some time, uh, to get, there's a long list and projects move through the list by priority, expense, that sort of thing. Uh, so as of the last quarterly meeting three months ago, uh, it, it got, the ranking of it got increased. So it got closer to the funding. To say when it will be funded, I cannot attest to that. The ones that are in the city, we do, the ones that's not in the city, the state does.
Well, the state can pay for their planning on the bridge that they should have put up a radical in, in my opinion.
The state should.
City of Louisiana, at any lights they installed in the city, the city would pay for it. So they come in here and say, we will not pay for street lights in the city, we'll put them in, but we will not do it.
That's when that John Mountle Montgomery came from the Transportation Department. That's, that's true, that's his name, but it ain't the one that you're thinking about.
Not the one from Nichols.
I don't know where he's from.
It's not the poster fifty-five, yeah.
Well, they need, there is no posting.
Yeah, you don't find it until you get up close to Virgil's house, his next class.
So if you come off twenty-three, you really don't see it if you're turning and going.
Yeah.
Nope, they ain't nothing, they, no worrying for us there, it says speed limit to get up.
Is that something the state would do, put a sign up there?
It's state road, so, yeah, they would, they would have to sign up.
Yep. Alright, well, that's all I have.
All the same.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
It needs to be forty-five. Well, whatever it is, I mean, you look, you look down there and you're thinking, well, what is a speaker? Is it fifty-five, forty-five?
Uh, we probably need a formal motion by council on the hospital property uh, to exercise that purchase option for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and directing me to ex- prepare a deed for it.
motion by Mr. McClanahan, second by Mr. Farley, all in favor, any more questions?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Bud, I forgot that.
I forgot it too.